Go ahead and call it July eleventh, fourth section of order. Please stand for a flag to put in the moment silence. Roll call please.
Doctor Bobino.
Here.
Mister Cannon. Miss Dunahay. Mister Ellie. Mister Johnson.
Here.
Mister Knox.
Sitting here.
Miss Lynch.
Here.
Mister Scott.
Here.
Miss Smith.
Okay, moving right down. We have no presentation. Hearing of visitors. Looks like we have two signed up. There no one. First is Tony Page.
Hi.
Good evening.
So I am here tonight. I want to talk about the NLS program as a mom. Of three students who have gone through Central Mountain High School, myself, I'm a graduate, two thousand and three graduate. My son, who's with me here tonight, who will speak after me, is a student that went through the NLS program. For a good reason, he found himself in some trouble that was a consequence of his own actions. He did well. It was an environment for him to feel safe and supported and cared about and heard. He was able to accomplish work. Recover credits he needed to recover and stay caught up with his current work. He was able to transition back to the high school into CLP. He was in CLP prior to go into NLS. With Tony Comper, who I will just say is absolutely amazing. Sadly, he's not here anymore. Along with other teachers in the, in the CLP room. If it was not for NLS and CLP and the staff at both of those places, my son probably would not have had the support within the school district. To walk across that football field just a month ago. He played football this year, his senior year, he did track. He got back on track, he put in the work. But without the support of those here, also Deb Klein being a huge support, I will throw in there, she's wonderful. I don't know how well he would have done. I can't be with him all day. I can only push him so much. As a mom, it is comforting and it was comforting in that time when he was really down on himself. Didn't know how he would get out of it, didn't know if he was gonna graduate, wanted to give up. But he had people at NLS in Pleasant Gap where he, that's where he physically went. And here at the school in the CLP classroom, who made him feel heard and seen and they kept in contact with me all the time, all the time. Tony would email me. Axel won't stay off his phone, he doesn't want to do anything today. But not just the not so good days, the really good days, when he said, he really busted his butt today and is getting stuff done. And he's on track and now he's ahead. If it wasn't for that program, I don't think that my son would have graduated high school. And he'd be maybe in summer school or whatever option there is right now. To graduate. My daughter, who in the fall, who will start her senior year, never went to NLS in Pleasant Gap. But spent lots of time in CLP. Tony, Mister K. Were huge supporters of her. She could talk to them if she was having a bad day. She didn't want to do anything. They feel heard, they feel seen. They feel like I can do this and there are people that support me. Cause as a mother, and I can sit here and speak, I suppose, I do feel as if there are some that aren't as supportive. And look at them as their mistakes and the bad choices that they've made and don't blink an eye and could care less. But the teachers and the staff at NLS and CLP and other staff in the school, not all of them, need needed to show them that. And I think that both of my kids felt that. And Shay, my daughter, she's now on track. And to make up, like she's been able, she was able to do credit recovery and make up some stuff so she could get back on track and that she will be able to graduate next summer. So hopefully people can see that the program is beneficial. There are kids who need it and without it, they're probably not gonna thrive as much as you think they are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I gotta pause. Is it Adele? I don't know what your first name is, I'm sorry. I can't read it. Axel, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Hello. My name is Axel. I'm here to talk to you about my experiences at NLS and what I went through. I can't speak for other students, obviously. I think there's good and bad parts to both sides, keeping NLS and not keeping it. For me, it was definitely a positive. For some students, it's not. I feel if you take the right steps towards trying to get better, NLS will definitely help you accomplish your goals. They have multiple support teams at the facility that I was at in Pleasant Gap. They gave you choices to help at counseling wherever you live. They had counseling there specifically for people that you wanted to talk to. I personally made a connection with a guy named JP. I loved him. He helped me get through my hard times while I was up there. I don't feel that getting rid of NLS is a good option. Because there are students that are in my shoes that need that. To show them that they're on the wrong path, to put them on the right path. There are some students who won't listen, no matter where they go. I think there's some students that just don't care. They don't want to get better. They don't see you guys or staff as authoritizing as other people do. I was struggling at home and both at school. With mental stuff and physical stuff. The therapist up there, her name was Kate. She was a really good support for me. We kept in contact even after NLS through the teachers in CLP because they had her contact information. And I still continue to talk to her to this day. I think there's I don't think students should be up there for as long as I was. I was up there for supposed to be forty-five days. It ended up going longer towards fifty, fifty-five days. I'm not too sure why. I don't feel like I should have had to been there that long. I do feel some kids should have to if they are not taking the right steps to become better. I feel that there are some things in NLS that need to be tweaked. But I don't think it should go away altogether.
Thank you very much. Next up. Superintendent. It's summer, so I'll keep my report fairly short. First of all, I really want to celebrate the success of our Skills USA team. Sophia Dressler took first place in the country in her area of the applied mathematics. And then Ellen Banfield, Emily Everett, and Samantha Streeter took eighth place again in the nation for their work with the Stop the Bleed. So a shout out to them and to the staff that has supported them and helped them get there. To their families that are all part of the support network that helped them be as successful as they were and truly represent Keystone Central very well. Removing the administrative regulations from where they are, it's kind of a non-intuitive place to find all those administrative regulations. Again, those are the things that kind of are the rules behind the policies, kind of that give us the more specifics of the how-tos. They're kind of very weird place, weird place. So Christine is doing a good job of moving them so they're more publicly available so that board and the community can see not just the policies, but also the administrative regulations that help support those policies. That's in progress, that should be done by the time we meet in August. We're in the middle of interviews for a few positions, in particular, the PSO director, that's an ongoing process. And we did the interviews for the human resources specialist as well. I know there's other positions that are being worked on, special education, custodial, there's lots, lots of work going on. I am as I said in the last meeting, the only reason that I would exercise the, the ability to hire without board approval is in a case where it would be kind of an emergency situation where you might lose, lose a person. We haven't faced that yet, so all of the hires you'll see that we are working on right now, you'll see in the August board meeting. I've been hearing some from community members and from staff and something that I've noticed as well, that our website isn't as easy to access information as I would like.
It's always been, it's always been a chop and mix.
So, so what I would like to do, first of all, is in the fall, we're going to have, opening up a communications committee. And I'm getting representatives from each one of the school buildings that includes a staff member, a parent and a student, for secondary students. And administration and then community members as well. Bring everybody together and figure out what are the problems and what might it look like? If you, we had a system that was more intuitive and more easy to, more straightforward to access.
Remember, we discussed, I brought up about a page on our website for people to go find beds and stuff. And we were told, yeah, there is one. Find it, show it to me.
Right, exactly.
Because it's not there.
It, it's there, it's just, it's in a weird place and hard to find. And, and so that's, I would like to fix that. I would like things to be more accessible to our community.
Cause I have an engineer that wants to put a bid in on this one that we
Haven't sent me any email.
Okay, because there's, he can't even find.
Yep, haven't sent me any email.
I'm sorry, Doctor Redmond, I know this isn't discussion, but it's ironic that you're bringing this up. And I'm so glad you're bringing this webpage up because it's sort of been on my long, long list, is there are school districts that hire third parties to manage their websites that are professionals, so maybe during your discussions. Oh, so maybe during your discussions with staff and everything, if that's something you'd like to look into, I would totally support that, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then the other part, besides just the website, is how our phone system works. Again, I've been hearing that sometimes it's a little difficult to get in and figure out who they want to talk to, folks we're calling and want to talk to. So again, we just want to do a little cleanup. We want to be available and accessible to our community. And so this is the first step in getting some of that work done. The last thing I want to talk about really briefly is that I saw a news story over dinner tonight that the legislator is supposed to be in session to vote on the education budget. So hopefully we'll have some sort of something, either tonight or tomorrow, that'll give us a little more direction from the state level about what our budget is going to look like.
So you, you mentioned hiring a HR specialist.
We have one in place right now, so this is the replacement for Tracy.
Okay, I was gonna say, isn't that what Justin's doing?
No.
Okay. All right.
Different.
And the PSO, and the PSO is the property services.
So, so the position that was vacated by Rob.
Will the board have an opportunity to interview at all like we did last time?
There are board members part, as part of that interview committee.
I would have, I'm on the facilities committee, I would have really liked to have been on that.
Okay, I, I sent out invitations for that.
I don't, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see the invitation.
I didn't see.
We're not, we're not for the facilities committee.
I don't, okay, well, let me know when the next meeting is, please.
That's all I have.
Mister President. In reference to Ms. Dressler and her colleagues. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
In reference to Sophia and the other, okay. I don't know if our school district does anything like this, but where I went to school. People that achieved something of this nature, there were certificates that were prepared for them if if we have that, I think we should do so. If we don't, or even if we do have it, I think also it would be nice to generate a letter from the board expressing our congratulations for a good, a good job done and appreciating the work. And if you'd like me to put that in a formal motion, I will do so.
I don't think it's necessary because traditionally do something on that line for different things that they win and try to give. Usually Kurt would come on with certificates and stuff. I think there's a wall over there on the at the school with pictures of kids that do outstanding things. Things like that need to be recognized. We need to recognize these students.
Well, that's where I'm driving at. Are we gonna do something for these kids? Cause they deserve.
Yeah, I mean, we
I mean, if, if, if somebody won a national championship in swimming or track.
It'll be up there.
You know, it's, this is the same way.
Yeah. So I'm sure we'll try to get something set up. I think before they've came to their meetings and gave them certificates and things like that in the past.
Sorry, thank you, sorry to add to the agenda.
We didn't have any committee reports in the meeting. Reports, any question on a treasure report? Financial report? Student enrollment report? Liberty Curtain Spent- Spentiture Report, this is a new one that you guys always asked about last time, last meeting. So Jenny, Jenny's gonna start generating it and put it here if you can see it. I'm trying to break something down on there.
That works good, Joni, but is there a way to put one vendor and all their stuff we pay? And then the next vendor, what they pay instead of jumping all over to go the whole way through it?
Yeah, consolidation.
Can it, can it be done like Lowbar has three or four entries, this is what it was, somebody else does?
This is generated by the account number. It's how, I don't think there's a canned report, but I will look. I don't think there's a canned report that lists by vendor, because what you're doing is you're sorting by Liberty Curtain, not by vendor. So Liberty Curtain, I'll just give you an example, that see the sixteen at the last two digits goes sixteen zero zero on this report. Sixteen is Liberty Curtain. And that's how you filter this report. It would take a long time for us to go through and pull out every, and figure out what vendors are on every report. So there's no canned report that would, that I believe wouldn't do that. But again, I'll check.
Okay, it's just, it's hard to follow with what's going on.
And I, I find me also, I think this is a good draft and I understand you're working with the old system. So I, I do appreciate that. I would never want that group to have to do excessive work. But on the flip side of the coin, using Excel is so easy. So you can see, I'm not saying you should, and I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm just saying, when anyone looks at this, I should be able to look at this and know exactly what this is. And I don't, you know what it is, you know, bless your heart. But I look at this, I have no idea. Is that what these things are used for, what fund they came out of? I have no idea what this means. I would have to which I find highly unreasonable for anybody, would have to go back through our minutes and Google search those particular words to come up with what that was actually for. So to me, this is not user friendly. For a finance officer, it is. But if I'm in the public and I'm looking at this, I don't know, it doesn't speak to me. Is there a way to make it speak to everyone? That wouldn't be too unreasonable of your time and whatever that may be.
Let me try pulling it into Excel and then filtering it that way.
Okay, but however, that would be lovely. Thank you. Good first step.
Thanks, Jenny. Any other questions on the Liberty Curtain Spentiture Report?
No.
Moving down to board. The MOU with PSCA. If you read through it, it's basically, I understand we're trying to have with an individual that's currently a parent educated in the building or the district, wants to take a leave of absence to get a degree. Agreement with him to come back. Holy God, I guess. Any questions on that?
Yes, actually, I do. I, I think it's great that we support the staff and we, and the district helps them if they want to further their career in education. My question is, is there anything in the contract or anything that district can do that if, or I'm sorry, when he comes back with skill sets? That he, if he's offered another job somewhere else next year, that we're not just gonna lose all the resources we put into this gentleman? Is there anything that is gonna help retain this individual once they come back?
Contractually, no, although we have some requirements for if we pay for their schooling and they leave within
Okay, so in other words, when the contract comes up for revision, for negotiations, maybe we should make that a little longer? Because the, these individuals are gonna be in high demand. And I really, like again, I totally support us helping our staff. But I don't want to help them and then John Smith School District down the road offers some more money. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold it against any employee to jump ship because of that. So just a little bugging. So I'm gonna support this, but I don't support that we don't have anything to keep this individual here for at least five years.
Unfortunately, that's contractual at this time.
Well, that's what
We worked on, but I think Frank and I talked the other day about, one of the things they're, they're hoping they can line up. That they might be able to get this individual, I guess he has to do like an internship instead of building, to do it in our building. That we can utilize in that way also. So it's just the different steps we're trying to take to retain and keep all the people.
No, I understand that, but you, okay.
Any other questions on that? Next, policy, second read, we have two. Disposal surplus property and records retention destruction is gonna be one of the questions.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, please.
Under seven hundred property. It says that the board directs adequate property records be maintained, the land buildings and all that. And that we're supposed to know of stuff that we're getting rid of and approve it. But then it goes down delegation of responsibility, then it's all up to the superintendent.
It's conflicting.
So we don't where it's conflicting. Because it says the board's supposed to know about it. And then the superintendent deals with it, but down there lower, it says the superintendent could just do it. When do we find out about it after the fact or?
We should have, we should have noticed this earlier.
It just, it's just conflicting, that's all.
Yeah, in fact, when, I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier.
I think that's also
Yeah, it's, it's so odd because when you read through it, it looks like the board has to be approved these disposals. But then when you go down, this all of a sudden superintendent is in charge of, so they have, you have two different entities who are given the same amount of power or I hate to use the word power, but oversight.
And then the superintendent can designate somebody else to get rid of it.
Right, so
It's just conflicting. I'm wondering if we can't clear it up.
Yeah.
Maybe just something as simple as the superintendent will provide us a list of what we're getting rid of.
Yeah, I mean, anything
Sweet and simple, that so that we know what's
I think what's gonna have to have, have to happen then is having this pulled from the second read, sent back to the policy committee for revisions and then come back to the first reading back.
That's reasonable, yeah.
That's gonna be the thing to have to do.
But
Something, he's pushing it off.
I do too, but it's something I
The world will keep spinning.
Done right.
I think, I think we're gonna have to do it that order for next week. So someone's gonna have to request either pull it or table it or something.
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Not tonight.
Oh, next week.
Next week, okay. That's what I'm saying, I have to put it up to next week, because today we're just discussing it.
Right.
Next week, we're voting on it.
You're right.
Yeah. I'm always right.
No, you, sorry about that.
Never mind.
That's up to you guys for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving forward from there.
That's fine. I just, it just was conflicting and I think if we just put a blurb in there that he can tell us, hey, this is what we're getting rid of.
We, we should
Review it.
Yeah.
Forward step one, step two again.
Yeah, we should clarify the language, but I mean, maybe I'm off base on this, but is this like the kind of micromanaging that we're not supposed to do? Do we really need to know about this stuff ahead of time? Or is it the sort of thing that we can rely on Doctor Redmond to take care of, you know? Now, if we find out he's giving away tractors we bought last year, maybe that'll raise a, you know.
Most of the time the surplus property are chairs with three legs.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we have enough trivial stuff that I think shouldn't be here anyway, that we, you know.
Usually sell a lot of that stuff like at
Right.
Or scrap prices or dump.
We, in the past, we've, when we've accumulated a lot of that kind of stuff, the furniture and so on that hasn't been used or is gonna be discarded, a lot of times, once it, once property services accumulates a lot of that, then we'll periodically have an auction. Yeah. And they will, you know, get whatever you can get out of it. Yeah, I, I understand that, but do we need to know about that and approve that? Does, at this level or can be done at a lower level in the chain of command?
Well, if we're
I'm thinking that it can be done.
We should know about it.
Other than the real estate, I don't think we need to.
We always talked about the auction here in the public meeting.
Right.
And discuss it, decide when, where, what, how, all those.
And Rob, let us, let him walk through, let's look at everything too, so.
I'm not micromanaging, but it'd just be nice to know because ultimately, the board is responsible for the financial position.
And that's what I said, the best thing to do is someone table it next week.
Okay.
Motion to table it, hold it over, go back to the policy committee. Fix the language that you're reluctant about, I guess. And then move, move it back from again, probably the best bet. Any other questions on seven oh six? About policy eight hundred?
Yes.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I had a citizen contact me very upset that this, the video recordings are gonna be gone after one year. And he requested that they never be taken off. I'm, I'm assuming that means YouTube. I'm assuming, but it doesn't say, and nowhere in there does it say YouTube in the, the attachment. So I I don't see the one year, that's what I said to him. I said, look, I don't see the one year. I don't see the word YouTube in either of the attachments. So I'm, I'm, now I'm confused.
So what we talked about in policy committee is taking down the recorded videos which are housed on YouTube after, one year after posting date. The videos are not the official record.
No.
Minutes are the official record. And so we, we want to encourage folks if they have questions or want to see the official record of the board meeting. The video is, it, the official legal record is the, is the, are the minutes.
But again, in, in both of these, nowhere does it say that in the attachment. So that's why in the, in the summary part, it mentions it, but then in the attachments, nowhere does it mention it. But then, in the attachments, nowhere does it mention it.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I kinda have a little problem with that, um. The minutes give us an overview of what we've done, but they don't really tell us what we've done. Okay, there's a lot of gaps in there. Uh, there's a lot of um, interpretation. I, I think it'd be a good idea. To keep this stuff available somehow, if it can't be kept on YouTube. Another way, you know, uh. Somebody that knows more about the technol, much more about the technology than I do. To figure that out, but there's gotta, there's gotta be, right, hell, even if you put it on a thumb drive. You could probably store about two dec- decades worth of thumb drives in, in one of the drawers of somebody's desk. You know, it's uh. I don't think it should disappear. And I don't think the, the minutes, I don't think.
I think we need to have some sort of closing date on it, I don't.
Five years?
Like, five, yeah, five years might be adequate, it might be two.
Let's put it this way, what, what's, at least as long as the statute of limitations on any legal actions that might arise.
But it's not, they have barriers.
Legal documents.
It's it, yeah, there is actually, like, I understand that there is actually legislation that states that video recordings. Are not.
I understand that, but I'm, and I didn't say it was, I just, you know.
I, I know this is probably gonna. Tap you in the heart, but. It's just maybe we talk to David Lindsay and get some advice from him.
His advice, his advice was to remove, remove it as soon as.
Yeah, and I disagree with that completely.
I'm kinda on that same page, they said everything I had to say. I think that. I like it because I can go back and look at some things we discussed before or whatever. And get refreshed on it. And I think it, getting rid of it after one year is just too short, and I think that's something that. We need to, to really look into and talk about.
Well, that's true.
Back of the policy meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't. We might be able to move these two attachments and, I mean, without pulling them. For next week. As long as that one year erasing the Youtubes is not in there, and I read them three times and I. I can't find the wording in the attachments.
I would suggest, again. That you pull that from the second read.
Okay.
Make the changes that you wanna make. Make modifications and then come back from the policy committee the first read.
Right.
That's, that's the. Proper legit.
Sure, no, that's fine, I just hate to see another extra step, but yeah, okay, just so everyone, okay.
What was, uh, what was David Lindsay's rationale for saying one year, Dr. Redmond?
He wasn't specific, specific about a time, although he's, um, when we talked about it, and I said, well, is this like a year, and he said, sure, that's something like that. Uh, the um, retention of, of non-legal records is um. Could potentially put the, the district in a, in a position about having conflicting records. And I, I don't wanna misstate what he said, I don't remember off the top of my head, quite honestly, so I don't wanna. Say too much without having, going back and.
Yeah, that's, was the gist of what he said.
Yeah.
But my point is. If. If the, if the minutes are gonna be the official.
They are.
If the minutes are gonna be the official end-all record, then they need to be a lot more detailed and a lot more accurate than they are.
How long do we actually store the records now? Is there a timeline?
For video recordings?
No, there's no timeline. No, or written record, permanent, permanent.
Does it, does it cost us anything to keep the videos on YouTube or anything?
Uh, Jeremy said currently, no, but that we don't know that that will always be true.
Okay, well, if we keep the minutes forever, it's no harm in keeping the videos.
It, it might be something as simple as it, every year pulled off of YouTube and put it on like those that are flash.
Yeah, exactly.
High drives. You know, I mean, I don't know how much they charge for commercial things like this, but it's like a hundred dollars a year.
With the same place you store.
Everything stored in the cloud and it's right there.
I don't know, but I'm not a cloud person, but if you stored the minutes for the year with the same places stored in them. Written records for the year, keep them all together, maybe something to look at, but again, that, take it back to the policy committee.
All right, we'll pull one for them next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we have minutes from the various work section, voting session, special voting minute, meeting minutes. Any questions on those?
No, nothing.
No.
Okay, moving to J, business. The board secretary. This is just. Basically appointing Ms. Taylor as the board secretary. Uh, just to start doing like bonding paperwork and all that stuff for her. Any questions on that?
Um, I, I still, I'd like to go on record that I am adamantly opposed. To a school board secretary also. Having to. Be employed uh, by a superintendent and having a dual role. Um.
Aren't they ultimately all employed by the superintendent?
Well, what I'm saying is the, the dual role, that the, there should be some separation there, so. I understand why the school district wants to do it, and when they, I'm sure it'll pass, well, I should say, sure. But I just wanna say, I think. The board secretary, if we would've had an opportunity to discuss this before the whole Tracy Long thing happened. Um, we could've easily put in RF. Uh, uh, job description out there for. A, could've been even a part-time board secretary, a third party even for the school board. So, I, right now, I, I'm not gonna, I can't support it. And again, we were never even discuss, no one ever came to me and let me know anything was going on with Tracy Long. And again, I was thrown in the bus, but I feel very adamant. That the school board secretary should be a separate entity. From the superintendent secretary, and it has nothing to do with. The job skill or anything, it's a matter of diplomacy. And democracy. They are two separate things, so. Thank you.
I think you're gonna find that most school districts. Have a board secretary who is also a district employee, whether it's the business manager, whether it's the. Whether it's the secretary of the superintendent. I don't know too many that hire a separate person. Have a separate position as board secretary, I mean, that's, that's, that's redundant, I don't think you need to do that. I, you know, I understand that, and that's what Tracy was, but I, I agree with Elizabeth, there should be some distance to, to, to be in the office. With the superintendent and. We. We need to be able to rely on the, a person too, that they'll have some allegiance here. And it's got nothing to do with Christine, Christine, I hope you don't realize this has got nothing to do with you.
No.
This is a principal thing.
Yep.
And I, I would agree with what Elizabeth says that, that um, I think we should have someone that's. More dedicated to the school board without a double allegiance to you, Dr. Redmond.
Yep, sorry, but, and again, I wish we would've been given an opportunity to discuss it, which we weren't.
Any other questions on the board secretary? J two, bills for payment, any questions on the bills?
Oh, yeah.
I figured.
Yeah. If you go to page one. Uh, there's an entry for Pearl's Diner for retirement for dinner supplies. For two eighteen thirty-six. Then if you jump down to. Page one, further down, there's supplies. Bought from Walmart for retirement dinner. Then you go down to page two, there's another one for retirement dinner supplies. And then you go down to page nine. There's retirement dinner, one thousand two fifty-seven seventy-five. Then there's another one on page eleven for three seventeen twenty-one. All of this adds up to one thousand eight sixty-four oh one. For retirement dinner. And then. If you throw in the four fifty for, that I asked about at the last meeting. We're up to two thousand and three fourteen oh one. And then I have a question. Of. Could this come out of wellness fund or something else? Instead of just a general fund where the taxpayers are paying for it? I've never, ever worked anywhere where. The business did through the party or anything and. It, I'm amazed that all these entries are popping up all over the bills for payment. Why isn't it in one category? So we can see what we spent. There's another one down there. On page two for engraved brass school bells. Is that for retirement also? It was? Okay, so now we're up to three thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and one cent. Uh. Who's okay in all of this?
Tony, give me answers for that.
It typically runs superintendents um. Through the process through the superintendent's office, and typically the um, assistant to the superintendent takes care of the retirement dinners. It's, we've always had retirement dinners for retirees, many of these employees have been here twenty-five, thirty years. Um, and it's not just one employee, it's, it's multiple employees um, for the retirement dinner.
Well, why don't we set up one account for retirement and take everything out of it every year? Instead of dancing around to different entries all over the place, because then nobody can keep track of what we're spending.
It's coming out of the same account number, it's just, this is by date, by fund, this is by date, that's, or by.
It's just something that caught me off guard because I was looking at it.
Yeah, it's by date.
Three thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, it is a lot of money. And somebody can say I'm nitpicking or whatever. But when you add it all up. It, it ends up being quite a bit of money. Second thing I had. Was. On page one. Why did we spend six hundred dollars for a homeless family gas cards? For Ukrainian family? There's plenty of outfits all over town that'll help people that are out of gas. Or whatever, that's taxpayer funds we're giving away.
I believe Christine has it.
Yeah, this, none of that came from taxpayer monies, that was through our homeless grant. And through our homeless grant, we have funds to provide to families who. Um, don't have transportation or, so this family came in, and I think. Regardless if they're Ukrainian or not, that's just happens to be the family that came in. Um, they were doubled up in a situation, and then they were moved to Jersey Shore area, and they were moved. To a very obscure area where we couldn't really very easily get busing to them. So. In the past, we have also created um. Parent contracts, so essentially we did the same thing because we have these funds. So we determined the mileage for them to drive their children to our school. And gave them the equivalence of that through the gas cards. And all of that came from our homeless grant monies that we have until the end of September to spend.
Well, you know. Somebody can take a gas card and just go sell it and get cash on it.
And I guess that's their prerogative, but the intent is for. Them to purchase gas with that. And um, it would be the same thing if they submitted the mileage and we cut them a check, they could go do whatever they wanted. With that check as well, so. We've done this with a couple other families who have needed to get their kiddos to. School programs and who were identified as homeless.
Okay, I'm just curious, cause that really caught me off guard.
Didn't, uh, that, that was from the S R funds, correct?
Correct.
Which are federal funds that were received as through the COVID relief money, correct?
And you have to apply for how you can spend that, you can't just choose to spend it. On anything that you wish, you have to get approval from PDE.
Okay.
And was it part of, is it actually based on uh, like homeless population and assisting that, was?
Yes.
And providing for our students that are homeless? Any other questions, Chris?
Yeah, on page two. There were three entries for an Alan Saint Jean. For books called Cactus Attacked Us. For two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. What is that about?
So there's a, an author that was brought into Woodward Elementary and he co-wrote a book with the students. And so this is for the, the production for that, and I, I don't remember if the students. Or parents purchased that after or not, but it was, it came out of, um. It went through uh, Woodward Elementary.
Okay.
So it was a, an author that came in and taught students about uh, writing and authoring and publishing.
Okay.
And then on. That was an honorary and for the uh.
That's a combination of things.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I asked the.
Pricey book, if it's three books for two thousand.
No, no, it was, it was books for all the kids.
Yeah.
They did something like this, buy, whatever, buy through also, the author comes in, the kids help author the book or write the book, and then. They'll.
It's, it's really cool that.
Well, see, that, that is cool, that's why I'm asking questions, cause I just learned something we didn't know nothing about. On page five. There's multiple entries with Amazon, it's, it's crazy. For slime kits. Hot Wheels cars, tattoos and other toys. What is educational about that? I'm really curious. Are we, are we setting up a daycare or are we?
No.
Here to educate?
Yeah.
Again, federal money, that's title four, that's not.
Well, I'm sure federal monies could be spent for better things than slime and tattoos. Glitter tattoos.
So it's.
I'm sure that's not what that money's intended.
I think it's part of the PBS rewards system.
Okay.
Means what, I'm sorry.
So, positive behavior interventions and supports, and I guess I should let Randy speak more to that, uh, Randy and Christina, I'm sorry. Uh, speak more to that about our system of rewards for positive behavior. Either of you wanna take that?
So, and, and some of the, the schools, they have the school store set up, the teachers have school store set up. And so as the, the students earn points, they can redeem points. Because they behave properly, they were respectful. You know, they did all the things that you're supposed to do as a student, and so they earn these points, and then they would redeem them at the store to buy. Trinkets that, you know, are attractive to them, that they would like to utilize, whatever that may be. And a lot of times the kids are surveyed to figure out what kinda things go into the stores. And that's where that purchases come from with that federal monies, they buy those kinda goods that they are attracted to, that they can earn through. Positive school-wide behavior system.
Okay.
Now, is this federal money earmarked for things like this, or can it be used for anything?
Yeah, it's typically earmarked for specifically.
That's important, thank you.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna beat this one down, and the teachers and everyone, they know best what works in their schools, but. Um, philosophically, I did not know this was hap, I mean, I didn't know this was happening, so we're all like training the children to be consumers of disposable products. Um, that's a conversation for another day. But, um. I. Think we can do better, but that's, that's another issue for another day.
Elizabeth, thank you. We've had numerous discussions on the PBS program here, we've talked about it, remember the pyramid and all the.
Oh, yes, yes.
Part of that PBS program, we're trying to reward kids for positive behavior. And I mean, it's kinda hard to reward the kids for positive behavior. Not let them have something they like, they want and. I don't know what's. Non-consumable thing.
Well, it's not my place to say here now, but maybe in a committee or something, but that, this has brought up an interesting, interesting.
We're trying to establish the best positive behavior we can.
Absolutely.
Part of that is rewarding the kid by giving him a. Glitter tattoo, so it's, so bad, so, I mean, if we can.
That's just why I wanted to know what we're doing, that's all, because there's another one on there for fifty-four stress balls.
That's probably for the board.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chris?
Yeah, if you went down to seven. If you went down to page seventeen, there was thirteen severance payouts for mid-America. Is that part of this group that's retiring? Because that totaled up to a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine fifty-nine forty-three. That's the retirement groups. Okay.
Is it? We have to put the money into this account for the. We have to put the money into this account for the early retirement setup. It goes to this place. You can't just give it to the employee that has to go in here. So.
Right. And then the last thing I had, we had purchased gift cards at Sheetz that ended up being five thousand six hundred and seventeen ninety-five.
So that was the class of two thousand twenty-four. It was their funds. That wasn't taxpayer money. That was that class, classes money.
I see, I was assuming be- because I had people calling about it. And I kind of think, I said that, well, I think that was a gift.
Yes, correct.
For the students.
Correct.
Okay, that.
I think Johnny told me earlier that the, the, apparently the Seton Mountain class did extremely well raising money this year. They helped pay for, like almost every student got part of their gown paid for. They get all kinds of assistance for all kinds of stuff.
Good.
They did. They, they did. They had a really nice senior ball, a class trip, all funded by the class. Helped pay for half of the captain gowns this year. The child, the student who was, who drowned down here at the river, they donated some of the funds for the funeral. So.
See, that, that's all awesome. And I wouldn't be asking the questions if like that was in a account on the bills for payment. If there was something there that said students' funds and then this stuff come out of that, I wouldn't be asking about it. But looking at the bills for payment sheet, it looks like it comes out of the taxpayer money. That's why I asked. That's why I ask if we could change things up a little bit and make some accounts.
May I add something? Thank you. Chris, what you brought up is something that's, ever since I've been a board member, even when I'm sitting on the opposite side of this table, the same conversation comes up every year and it just dies. That we, we get these sheets, but it doesn't show what school building, what is going towards, what, what fund it's coming out of directly. So that's something that, again, this is year five, I but that new software, Joni, wasn't that, that new software supposed to be able to do that for us now? So anyone with an eighth grade education can look at these bills and just boom.
Yeah, there's, there should be a, there should be a budget for each individual school.
Yes.
We have it, there is.
Well, it doesn't, it's a lot of our bills for payment.
Unless you break it down yourself.
Yeah.
It doesn't total up for each school.
We should be able to see what the budget is for each school. And then what's being spent under each school. We shouldn't have to skip all over through upwards of thirty-five pages or something. And that's what I've been asking all along. Why can't, there's not a business run in this town that their bills for payment are like that, I guarantee it. They don't have to look through their list of bills to say boom, 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 we paid this for each part of our, our business. They, they can look at a bill and say, oh, this building costs us this much of PP and L. This one costs us this much of PP and L. We have to dance all over the place. And that, in all honesty, I've been told several times, that makes it look like we're hiding stuff.
Absolutely.
And I would like to see us move forward and just clean that up. And then people will look at it and it won't look like you're trying to hide stuff.
He's absolutely, I, I'm sorry. He's, I, I totally agree with Chris. And again, this has been conversation multi-year. This page in itself completely turns off the public. And if we want to work with the public, if we want the public to start to even begin to trust us, this is a huge, huge wall. This report. So I would like to see us, the next financial committee meeting, maybe that could be on the agenda that the steps, the goals, what the board and cooperation with administration want to do or able to do. So we can finally put an end to this multi-year problem and move forward and stop discussing it.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
No, that was it.
Thank you.
Sorry to drag it out, but we got to learn. And we can't learn looking at it the way it is.
I thought we were, Mr. President, I thought that we were supposed to, if we have questions about things, to direct them to the people that could answer them ahead of time. So we don't have, no, we don't need to do it in a public meeting. You could have easily asked those same questions. We spent the last fifteen or twenty minutes. I am speaking, please. I have the floor, don't I?
Yes.
Thank you. No, I, I'm just, you could have asked those same questions of Dr. Redman or Joni prior to the meeting, rather than sitting here, taking up fifteen to twenty minutes, asking questions just to try to play gotcha with people. So.
Nobody's playing.
That's just my comment.
You done, Jeff?
Nobody is playing, I got you. It's called transparency. We are, we are voted in by the public to do things right and to do it that way. There's no, no game of gotcha, nothing like that. If that's what you think, that means you know we're doing something wrong.
If we were hiding things.
I got the floor, Jeff.
Yep.
It's all about transparency. There should be nothing we're hiding. And if I call Dr. Redman, which I have on things, he's been able to answer it right off the bat. So we're here in a work session to ask questions. That's all we're doing. We can't be transparent. We don't even need to be here. That's it.
I agree that transparency is very, very important. The only thing I've asked numerous times, if you have a question, a lot of these things, if you just send an email to someone and say, the Sheetz cards, what are the Sheetz cards for? That could have been answered ahead of time. It's not hiding anything. It's not being non-transparent. It's just clearing things up ahead of time. But the thing I ask, I've always asked, if you're going to do it, send an email to all of us. If you saw it, Elizabeth saw it, Bill might saw it, I saw it. Just that way the response comes back and tells us all. There's a lot of stuff that we try to have the information for, for the meetings. And sometimes we can't get that information. We don't know about it ahead of time. So we're not telling you not to ask questions. I'm not telling you not to be inquisitive or transparent. I'm just asking if you could, in the future, maybe just ask a question earlier. So all the information can be gathered and taxed. I think, I think it was one of two things we talked about and we got to get information on.
Okay, well, with that said, if I sent an email out to all of you, what are the Sheetz cards for? Just use that for instance. And you give me an answer. That doesn't help all them people on that screen that are wanting to know the same question. So then we're hiding.
Send it, send it, send an email, send Johnny an email when someone's saying, what are the Sheetz cards for? And then you can respond back to everybody and then you can say, I mean, I see we, our senior class bought Sheetz cards. Isn't that great? Because I, I think what they did was phenomenal, from the Sheetz cards to the robes to, or the gowns. The, the, the thing that blew my mind is helping with the poor child's funeral. Things like that. That's the stuff we need to put out in the public. Not that they bought Sheetz cards, that this group had money left. They did such a phenomenal job raising money. Their class advisors worked with them so well. They had all this money and they thought about each other and people that used to be part of their class. That's, that's the stuff that needs public.
That's what we just found out and that's what we just made public to all these folks and the news people up there. They now know how good a job they did.
Yes.
So that's a good question to ask. I, for one, will be transparent. I'm not gonna do things behind closed doors.
No one asks you to.
Okay. No, then let's move on.
Which? May I please? I just and I, I kind of agree with what Chris said that it's important if people, if we're, if, if Chris is raising questions with this, when these things become public, like when they're published now and people have concerns about them, an email between the, the ten of us doesn't help the people that are looking online. And we need to do a better job at that. Okay, I mean, I'm sorry, maybe things are different in Renova, but people down where I live are unhappy about the way we're making things public. They're not, they're thinking we're hiding things. And that's why we keep bringing this up. I think that now maybe we saved a couple of minutes, but we didn't send, save fifteen minutes by that, you know, there was, it was very quick. Joni, that was from the senior class. That quick, boom. Then we talked about the other things that you're talking about. I think that was a good thing, myself.
Not only things are different in Renova, but in Renova, in my opinion.
That may be.
But but we have to keep that transparency. We have to. We try very, very hard. Now, I know there's questions out there on the, I got a message at seven o'clock this morning from my ex-favorite group that threw me off because of the Sheetz cards. So yes, I know it's out there and I know where the, but now we all know about it. And I could have sat here tonight and said, we, this is what that great class did. Everyone on there would know about it. Instead of saying, oh, did we take money and buy district money and buy gift cards and sheets? And so it's just, we have to get the great things out. We're doing.
Well, we didn't know about it. So now we do. Now we can get it out there. So asking that question doesn't hurt. And back to what Jeff said, I have copies of an email. I asked Joni a question about. And I got an email back that said, did you ask Dr. Redman? And then I said, no, I didn't think we had to because in the beginning we were instructed, if we had a question, send an email or make a call about it. Then I guess Joni sent it to you, to Dr. Redman, and he advised her to go ahead and do it. But it took five emails to get an answer. That shouldn't be happening.
Agreed. We'll discuss. Dr. Redman will have a discussion. Okay, moving on. Three inquiry. Yes, Elizabeth.
I just, this is a perfect example of downstream versus upstream management. You know, having to email out, ask questions and do all, that's all downstream responses. Upstream would be, it's so easy to read that we wouldn't have to sit there and pick every little thing else. So again, I just, the point is made. Thank you.
Moving on, inquiry-based learning MOU. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, just again, I'm, I'm going to request, if this is a reoccurring contract, that it be stated somewhere in the summary. So again, my question is, is this a reoccurring contract that we had currently this current year? Or is this a brand new contract?
I, I believe it is, but I'm not sure. I'm going to have to go check.
Okay, if you could just let us know if it's a new contract or if it's just a re- revision from last year, that would be helpful. And then I'd be able to put my questions for it, but now I won't do it. Thank you.
If you read through it, it's, it's an agreement between Penn State, the Hamel Family Human Rights Initiative.
Yes.
Okay.
No, it looks great. I'm not saying anything. I'm just, is this a program we're already doing? It's just a rehash of a contract we did last year that the solicitor has already reviewed? Or is this something that's brand new off the shelf and has the solicitor reviewed it yet? So then, once we have those answers, then I feel that a further discussion may or may not occur. So don't worry about it right now.
It's an eight thousand dollar program to help with professional learning with our staff with Penn State. Any other questions?
Yeah. Dr. Redman, what, what exactly is this professional learning?
This particular one, I don't know, I'm the best person to speak about that.
Well, next meeting, we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to put you, you know, it's easy, but it, I mean, it's kind of vague, the, the, the document. Like very vague guy, read it and have no idea what we're, you know, who's doing what for whom. So.
Okay. Next, Soaring Heights Agreement.
I got a question on that.
Go ahead.
Down under payment of tuition, if you scroll down there under section A, it says for each student who requires autism, autism support service, the rate of tuition shall be three hundred and ten dollars a day. Tuition rates are exclusive of costs associated with the assignment of nursing professional, paraprofessional support. And if you keep on scrolling down through there, uh, the cost sheets are blank. We really don't know what cost for these extras that we're gonna have. So I'd like to know if we could sort that out.
So Soaring Heights is an approved private school. So it's approved by the Department of Education for students with special needs. We have contracted with them for a number of years. This is my fourth year in the district that we've had a contract with them. Currently, we have six students who are enrolled there. Most of the students who are there have exhausted our resources here in the district. And in order for us to provide them with the education that they need, they need to be in a smaller classroom environment where they have more resources. So a lot of times they'll have one-to-one, a student might need that personal care assistant. That's where those extra fees come in. So we are billed the tuition rate. But then we maybe build additional services if the student requires that. Those are all based upon the IEP team's decision. So Soaring Heights may make a recommendation, but we all come together as a team. I'm always a part of that, or Mrs. Harvey, in making those decisions.
I'm all, I'm all for it. I'm just curious if down towards the bottom there, the ends of the individual staff hourly rate, there's nothing in there. So we don't know what we're paying, what we're being charged. That's my question. Right.
So that means there's nothing that goes through those columns.
Okay, so, but do we know what we're gonna pay for the extra stuff or no?
It's not applicable.
Okay. So we're not going to get billed for it.
Paying that tuition rate and, and if students need related services, occupational therapy, speech, they contract with outside agencies that will provide that. So we do, we save billing for that.
Yep, when I saw the empty dollar signs with nothing behind them, that's why I was curious about it. That's it.
I'll stay here because the next two are special education related as well.
Quick comment?
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, not that it's important, or maybe it is, but I'm assuming our solicitor reviewed this one too, right?
They are sent, yes.
Great. And also the date on the first line of the contract, I don't know if it has to be edited because we haven't approved it yet.
Correct. So when you do, if you do, it would be on the eighteenth of July.
Okay, so this is, okay.
Next week.
All right.
Okay, New Story Agreement.
It's pretty much the same. So students with special needs. We have eight students currently there. Most of the students who attend, again, the IEP team makes that decision so they can have a higher level of support. The district remains in contact with them. Myself or Mrs. Harvey are involved in meetings to problem solve. A lot of times these are our most challenging students. So it, it's something that we need to keep in place for them.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, Dr. Redman sent out a pack of videos for us to.
That's her AEDY.
Yeah, but there, this, in the one part of the one video, it said what you have to have for AEDY. This service from New Story provides that same exact packet that we were using. Is there a reason that we can't do that here also?
Is that, it might be the requirements for a special education student. So you need to make sure you have all their documentation.
It was it.
So that would be the same for AEDY.
Like six different items.
Yes, so there's an IEP, there's the notice of recommended educational placement and a reevaluation report. So all of those things are likely the same for a student who goes to AEDY who has special needs. That may be what you're referencing.
That's what I'm curious about. If we have this place that's providing those six items.
But they're not an alternative ed. They are an approved private school for students with special needs. The New Story and the Soaring Heights. But they're not an alternative ed. They are an approved private school for students with special needs, the New Story and the Soaring Heights.
Okay.
It's kind of two different things.
Right. That's I was just trying to figure out because it was the same thing that he sent us the videos on.
They do need some of the same paperwork and requirement, but it's two different placements for.
Right.
All right. Any other questions on the news?
Yeah, please.
Very good.
Okay, could, could you help me please? Uh, just, why, why do we need multiple places? Are they really providing different things that are radically different? And if they are, what is it, please? Cause to me, I'm confused.
They do. So oftentimes the students who go to outside placements, again, have exhausted everything that we can offer them here in the buildings.
I understand that, but we've got, what was it? Newton? I'm sorry.
Yep, New Story.
New Story and the other one. What, what's the difference?
Typically, we look at New Story for students who have emotional disturbance. So they have that high level of need for, um, some physical support. They have a lot of physical aggression. We look at Soaring Heights more for students with autism. They deal most likely with that population.
That definitely takes something special. Now that, the first one you mentioned, then that sounds like it's getting very close to what the, um, Mount Nittany thing does.
No.
No?
They're two separate.
What's the difference? Cause it sounds similar to me.
So AEDY is for students disrupt- disruptive youth. Um, that is not an educational placement for a special education student. So a special education student can attend alternative ed based upon the IEP team, or if they have one of those three infractions, a weapon, alcohol, or threats. And they can stay there for a forty-five day placement. It's very restrictive for a student with an IEP, so a special education student. Soaring Heights and New Story are approved private schools. PDE recognizes them as such. So it's an educational placement. We can make that placement and PDE says, yes, we recommend that, or we realize or, or that you are making that recommendation based upon the needs of that individual child.
Okay. And I have one more, and this is sort of whichever one of you guys wants to pick it up, but it's, the IEP has been brought up several times and judging from one that came up a few meetings ago, which I mean, I admit, I, I'm learning about all this other stuff. This is, I'm new at this, but diabetes, I'm not so new at. And it came up, that was clearly overkill and ridiculous. We were wasting, you know, there was time, money, effort, and everything being wasted on this. How are these IEPs reviewed and, you know, determined that they indeed are appropriate and they're not, you know, out of, out of this, you know?
You mean results?
No, not, nothing to do with results, whether it's what you need to, to do that, you know?
So there, there's a process and we spoke when we did our data presentation at the last board meeting about MTSS, that multi-tiered system of support. So we look at students, how they are achieving academically. We look at the behavioral piece as well. Students are often who are struggling and not meeting those benchmarks are discussed by teachers. They're placed upon, um, an informal plan where they're, they're monitored, their progress is monitored, teachers continue to speak with them. But if there continues to be a lack of growth, students are then moved to the next step, which would be an evaluation for special education services. And that's done by a school psychologist. And they have to meet specific criteria based upon the Department of Education in terms of disability categories. The diabetes with the five, that could have been a five oh four service agreement because sometimes students with that level of medical need does not, is not considered special education. They have what's called a five oh four service agreement. I'm not sure what you were referencing there.
And I think that's what it was. Well, but I was told that it was the same thing as this under a different act. So that's why I brought it up. Uh, it was just something that was clearly not necessary. And I want, you know, are we making sure we're not doing these, doing something like that with these other things? Who's determining it? Is it being reviewed by other people that aren't involved with that initially to say, you know, this is?
There's a team and there's a process. And oftentimes with a five oh four plan, there's a physician involved who makes a recommendation or provides us with a report. Um, five oh four plans are usually pretty basic. There can be classroom accommodations, but some of them can just be medical needs that the student requires.
But all, well, either way, it was presented, well, we're, we're not gonna beat a dead horse. This is done, but you know, the way it was presented here was that this kid had to have a nurse or somebody with him all the time because he had a, an insulin or an insulin pump or something. And that was, if that was true, that was clearly ridiculous. Period. I've never, in my entire career, I never saw anybody that needed to have a nurse with them all the time to treat their diabetes. That's it.
All right, moving right on. Academics Development Agreement. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Again, is this a ongoing, it's the same as last year? Has anything been changed?
So this is a company we contracted with last year. Um, finding school psychologists is very difficult.
Sure.
Um, so we have had, since I've been here, which is ongoing on starting my fourth school year, we have not had the fourth school psychologist. It's always posted. We're always advertising. Um, we don't have that luxury. So we do contract, we have a TELA school psychologist. With this contract, we would be fortunate enough for the first time to have the same individual come back, which is very important because he already knows our systems. He knows our, our families. He knows our students, our teachers. So, um, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, um, bring him back through this contract. A very great company to work with. The documentation that we need has been stellar. Um, and he would be part of that process of doing those evaluations when we feel a student needs to go maybe a little bit further to see if they need those special education supports.
Okay. So his work is all offsite. So that's.
Yes.
Yep, that fair enough.
He's up on the screen.
Moving right along.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. The BCT technical assistance program is just a grant program through the Perkins Grant that we use for the CTE program. Any questions on that?
Great.
Acadians reading and math. It's being paid out of Esser funds. Any questions on that?
I wish, I don't want to ask any questions, but I, I do miss being up, not being on the curriculum committee. I'm assuming they had presentations on all this. Roger, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Did, did you, um, were, did they bring it to your committee, number eight, the Acadians reading and math? That they're requesting we purchase? Do you remember?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, they did. And, uh, we went through, we looked at it. Not only that, but um, there was a bunch of teachers that were involved.
Uh huh.
We talked about this the last time. So.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. I'll do that. Moving on, number nine. The Ames Web plus complete renewal. Any questions on that?
What is it?
Uh, forty-four hundred dollars paid out of title funding for.
It's a, a screening, uh, system that we use for students.
Justin's looking for a microphone.
So used for special education to use for progress monitoring IEP goals. So it's a data tracking system. Students are assessed electronically and then, um, the software collects the data and teachers are able to assess whether they need to change instruction.
Okay, good. I just didn't know what it was. That's all. What we're, what we see doesn't explain it.
Next up, NWEA map growth K twelve.
Yeah, same thing. What is, what is that? It's twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
So I, I can answer that. So actually the Acadians Ames Web NWEA over the last several years, those are our local benchmark assessments that we utilize. So when we did that data uh, presentation, those are the benchmarks that we were utilizing to pull that data from. So just not relying on the state assessment. So, um, the map assessment, we, we originally used K through eight. And we found that for kindergarten, first second, it wasn't real appropriate and given us the, the appropriate results from one year to, to the next, because the actual assessment just wasn't what we were looking for. So that's where the Acadians reading came in. So Acadians reading was used for, um, our primary grades and then three through eight, the NWEA map assessment is used. So it gives us um, data locally student to student, but then it's a nationally norm reference test.
So it's like a data tracking or none of that?
Um, it can be used, uh, if you remember when we gave that presentation where, uh, where, uh, Mrs. Hall had said from the curricular aspect that when we looked at implementation of certain grade levels and we saw great growth early, this is the assessment that we're pulling data to see where the gaps are for students and then feeding into that very strategic remediation for them on skills.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Justin made a stat there for the News Leah one. Pretty much the same thing.
Yeah, I was gonna ask what that was too.
Well, that's your.
It's News Leah.
New LEA.
Forty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
So blending learning district suite, it says for, uh, each one of our schools. Megan would be able to respond to that from pretty directly, but she's not here.
Well, maybe.
This is where, if you, another one of those, if you send the questions ahead, then we can get prepared to answer them in the lower end meeting.
That's okay. Next.
It's an educational tool they use for, these is listed on, I think every one of our schools are listed whenever. So. Uh, we get Megan. Next up. Magalera.
Come here.
Someone say what that is.
No, for all I, all I can see on it is it's a three-year contract. And it's a hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars for a reading.
For Magalera.
So that we discussed.
Fifty-eight hundred and twenty dollars.
We discussed that at the data presentation as well. That will be a screening tool that we're going to utilize to try to capture some of our students who we feel may need to receive gifted services. So we're going to be using that at the elementary level, doing a universal screening for both second and all of our fourth graders.
Okay.
We did pilot it last year and had some success with it.
Great. You know, that's, that she brought up by me.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
That's, you know, that might be really helpful to consider, you know, Dr. Redman, your team. When they're putting the agenda together in Butch, I understand they do put a little comment there, but maybe to consider putting a little more of a descriptor there. Um, those little blurbs of information really are helpful. And then people looking at, they'll, they're not only going to be looking at the price, they're going to be understanding that pilot program, da, 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 bullet, 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 boom. This is what it is. That would be so helpful.
I think sometimes it might be a little bit more description in there.
Yeah.
That could help maybe alleviate some of these long discussions. Well, like you said, a simple word, saying what this is, yes. Especially like the one with Megan's not being here. It's been, so it's something we can look into. Thank you. Uh, where am I at? Lexia.
Lexia, that's the hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Right.
Part of our reading program.
Okay.
Uh, paid for again out of, um, I think Esser Grant.
Out of what? I'm sorry.
The, the Esser Grant, the federal.
Johnny, this is twenty, you said that we're gonna pay for it. It had to be, the Esser Grant we have to use this year, it'll pay for it for the next two years. It won't cost us anything. It'll be a three-year program paid by this year's Esser's funding. We have to use September.
That was gonna be my next question is because there's another one there. It's a three-year contract and does that cover all three years? Okay.
Okay, that, the XM, when you were talking about Chris?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty much the same thing. And Esser funding is gonna pay for it.
I just wanted to make sure Esser was covering it for the term of the contract, not just to the end of the year.
No, it's a three-year contract. This is basically, I think, IT stuff.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Character strong. Any questions on that?
Yeah. We just got an email two hours ago. So I'm not gonna ask you about it till we get through that email. Then we'll have to talk about it at the next meeting.
And may I?
Because that's a lot of money. Uh, and I don't even know what it is.
Okay.
And yeah, uh, you did send an email out, but I saw it just a couple hours ago. So I want to go through it first.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I'm actually very excited about the software from what Megan was telling me last year when I was on the committee. So one thing interesting about this zone, and hopefully Dr. Reb, in case you lose any more staff or anyone moves or changes, I just want to put it out there that, um, Megan explained, explained to me that they're gonna be able to pull data out of these programs so easily. So that if we make sure that whether it's this board, next board, the five years from now, that we get continual, you know, reports to evaluate, because that's one thing powerful is the extraction of the data out of these programs. So.
Okay, moving right along, the inquiry renewals. Well, Danny. I think we'll let you talk about this, cause it's good news.
Insurance renewal.
Insurance renewal. So, if I tell them, what I'm gonna do. If you looked at that form, as you can see, we were paying, uh, about fifty-seven, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine, five hundred and ninety-five dollars for premiums. We got a reduction uh, by going to Utica, Stillthu, Gerhard, Her uh, for forty-nine thousand. So we're saving roughly ninety thousand. So thank you, Joni, for.
Yeah, it's a good job.
Is the deductible the same though, right? It's this year? Oh, beautiful. Beautiful.
Go ahead, Bill.
I, I do have a question. There, there was including in there a fee for inland marine. Do we have a large navy?
No, we have.
What, what, what's that about?
Does that include the water damage?
Okay, I'm clear. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, yeah. I mean, in the other two, it was included and on the one that looks like we're, we should probably go with, they, I think it was five thousand dollars they billed us. Yeah. Okay. And do we have a boat?
I think it's more referring to like water damage and things like that. I'm, I'm trying to think back when Beth Ricardo met with us, and I thought that was one of the things we talked about in water damage. We had damage to a gym floor in the past.
All right. Well, that I can understand it. Inland marine, it sounds like, you know, your canoe.
The inland marine coverage is actually when our equipment is being transported from property to property. So whatever we have in this building, if it is being transported to Central Mountain Middle School and something were to happen to it in between transportation. So it's not actually in this school or in the middle school, but it's in, in commute, it's en route. So it's covered for that.
Okay. Do you have any idea why it's called marine?
I don't, but I can find out. It, it threw me off as well.
Case you're all on your boat. Okay. All right. So that's good news. I want to get some good news. That's not another good news. We have a donation. Uh, basically that was six hundred and sixty dollars worth of water donated for the summer program. Someone's, three skids of water. So we'd like to thank them for the donation. Uh, questions on that?
Nope.
Nittany Learning.
I got some questions on that.
Go ahead.
We're paying sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars per student for a contract of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, you sent out an email that we gotta get this passed because prices will go up.
Well, what, what I said was that if we don't buy seats, we have to pay the per diem rate. It's fifty percent more.
But here's my question. here's my question. If we're buying, like you're saying, ten seats, what if we only have six kids? Do we get?
We started with the data on looking at that this year. This year, we had between the two placement uh placements, we had a total of fifteen seats. And there were more times, it was the situation that you're talking about, right? We had open seats, basically.
Right.
Uh, so I looked at the data every month about the number of students we had in these placements. And typically, we have about ten students. Sometimes it's a little bit less. Sometimes it's a little bit more. So ten students is a good average for us to figure we based on this last year's data, ten is the right number for number of seats that we should have available.
Because that one, after I read your email, I I felt like, wow, we gotta do this. We're being held hostage over it. But I wanted to know how many kids we actually have in it? How long are they in that program? Because from the videos you sent us, it looks like it's a pretty short program that they're there.
Yeah. It's a five day placement. So typically, we have students come and then we have other students that qualify. Sometimes, as you heard today from one of the students, the placement can be a little bit longer depending on their progress towards the ones that are set up. Uh, and Deb can speak to this probably better than than I can.
I was just curious that, like I say, if if we bought ten seats and only had six kids, do we still pay for the ten?
But again, looking at our averages this year, typically, we had more than that.
Can't we negotiate that and say, no, we're only gonna pay for the kids that we're sending?
Well, actually, we're getting eleven seats. They've given us one free one.
Yes.
Well, and one of the reasons that keeping the number at ten is valuable is when we have that eleventh student or when we have the eighth student, if we've only reserved seven, who needs the placement? If they're full, we don't have a place to send that student. So as long as we have reserved in advance those seats, when we need it, it's there. And as Dr. Edmund said, we have consistently been filling the seats that are reserved.
Okay.
I I.
Could we get a?
Go ahead, Chris. We got the floor still.
Can we get some kind of a report? Like on a quarterly report that we know how the, we don't need to know kids' names or anything like that, but know how they're progressing and how they're doing afterwards so that we know we're getting the best bang for the buck. I mean, we had one student sat here and said, okay, good. I've had four or five parents call that said didn't work for their kid. It's not going to work for every single kid. We know that. That's only being reasonable. But it would be nice to hear a report every quarter that said, hey, we had this many kids in, they've been put back into regular school. So we know what we're what we're doing.
Absolutely. And so what we do with the um, the folks at N L S, when we have a student who is placed there, as has been mentioned, it is for a forty five day placement. So around day thirty five, we talk about the goals that have been established for the student and the progress that they're making towards those goals to determine, are we going to start transitioning the student back into the general education program? Which we do slowly. What we'll do is we'll have a student spend two days with us, one week and three days still at N L S. See how those two days go. Three days with us the following week, two week, two days at N L S. And if during that transition period, there is any other infraction that occurs, the student would fully return to N L S for a minimum of forty five more days. Um, and so we absolutely do, you know, have really good data that we would be able to share on each of those students in forty five day increments. Now, there are times with a student where maybe fifteen days in, they weren't really making much progress, but after that time they started. So at forty five days, we haven't really seen the consistency. And that's why a student might end up not with an additional forty five, but with an additional fifteen.
Right.
So and I can also tell you that I was looking through some of our A E D Y data at the end of the year. And in a four year period, in terms of students who went and transitioned back to our school, only four of them returned to an alternative ed facility.
Okay, that's a kind of.
Four.
Four.
Out of how many?
Four. I don't remember what the total number was of students, but as has been mentioned, we are filling that ten at a time. So it is a good number.
That's kind of why I'd I'd like to see how that is progressing so that uh.
We have to play, we have to be a little bit careful about that.
We do.
Identifiability of students.
That's why I said we don't need to know names, just.
Well, the.
We had five students that went and they're back in or.
Well, so here here's what I mean by that. If we do this quarterly, because there's only ten seats, I don't want uh, someone to be able to identify who the students were because of when we're reporting it.
Okay.
If that makes sense, right?
No, they'll know who's not there.
Right. And so I I feel more comfortable doing on an annual basis, like a summary kind of a thing, uh, because that makes the it less possible to identify the students.
That that's fine. I just like to know how the program is working for our kids.
And and I think maybe.
Or if or if there's something we could be doing better.
Sure. And and as uh Deb was saying, we're we're looking at that throughout the year.
Right.
And so that can be part of the that that data gathering uh that we do throughout. And maybe we can include that in that data presentation like we did last board meeting. Just have that be part of it.
Okay.
Any other questions on it? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um. I I I'd like to see the majority of the school board request administration. They'll give them a year to give us the low, medium and high cost and quality of doing an in-house program. Now, if the majority of the board gives administration, the superintendent that direction, we will have options. Right now, I don't feel like we have any options. Now, now if I back up real quick for something else, Justice Works. I honestly don't know. Were we using Nittany Services like we were Justice Works or was Justice Works for a completely separate set of students?
They were being used for similar purposes.
Okay.
The benefit of the second program was if we had two students involved in an infraction together, we were able to send them to two sep- two separate locations for that policy violation.
Okay, thank you, because this is where I'm leading this. Um. All of a sudden, they up and closed in the springtime unbeknownst to any of us. And you had students that needed to be placed immediately, and we were able to do it in-house, correct? Is that what happened?
No, not for all of them. There were some students who were in a transition period already.
Okay.
Who did transition back, but students who were not in a transition period, we did have to find alternative placements.
So they went to Nittany Learning Services?
Many of them did. Um, I believe at Central Mountain High School, we did have a student who ended up doing a cyber charter, which was not what we would have chosen for that student.
Okay. What I'm saying is there's there's no competition here. There's no alternatives for us to evaluate, to look at. Um, I personally am still committed to in-house, not leasing space to a third party, but keeping our kids in the same schools, in the same school district, wherever that may be, on our campuses or at some other rented space at U P M C. I don't know, because that's not my job. But my job is is to make sure that we have options and evaluations and the best product. I also don't like the fact that there are personal relationships with individuals that work here and who are owners of this company. I'm not saying anything bad about those individuals, quite the contrary. I also.
But now we have lots of staff members who have businesses that are outside the school.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, please let me finish, is that I think it would be our due process to expand and look at other options. So we don't, maybe the other options won't be a good fit for us, but then we could come back. And we have absolutely, this is the best product for our kids. Right now, we can't say that. So right now, I can't support it.
It's the only product in town, unfortunately.
That's right. And we we've known that for years and we've.
No, it's only been closed. You said Justice Works.
Well, yes, but this was our main.
I'd like to.
If you'd like to explore the possibility of us starting running, we started the steps. That's why.
Right.
The the videos were sent to you.
Yes.
Come up with, we asked you to come up with a list of questions. We're gonna try to forward them to the people that made the video and get some answers. Hopefully, we can arrange some sort of time that we can schedule a meeting to start looking into what it would take, what it would cost and how to move forward. But it's not something that we're gonna do tonight.
No.
And have.
Right, no.
We'll be lucky to have it in line for the twenty five, twenty six year. So we have to start taking steps. So yes, we can start looking into it, but it's a it's a multi-day, multi-month process.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why we can get a reason.
Maybe learning is the only service we have.
But yes.
The they won't do the, so the start to get to get them to come to talk to us, we start with the videos. You go with the questions so they can give us a presentation on the things that we want to know based on the information that they gave us.
How do we start the program?
So.
There's my question. How do we start the program?
Yeah, I would.
That's my question. And I can't ask an articulated, reasonable, educated question unless I know what our options are. And we also have local school districts that have in-house programs. Why don't we invite representatives from those local school districts, zoom in and explain their program with us? You know, let's do this all together instead of stringing it out for months. That's why we request. Um, I options.
And then go.
Yeah, I do have a question, but a little comment. I I I kind of agree with Elizabeth when this is a feasibility study for setting up our own program. It'd probably be a very good idea. Um, and I recognize that it's not going to happen overnight. Okay? And I don't know that we need people from elsewhere, you know, at a meeting right away either. I mean, you know, I mean, you're the expert. I mean, you 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 know, there there's a lot of knowledge there that can work on this stuff. Um. My question is, you we mentioned, okay, we're buying ten seats. We get a baker's dozen. We get an extra seat for that apparently. And uh, what happens if we have twelve kids?
We have to pay the per diem rate for the twelve.
Okay.
And do we know what that is?
Fifty percent. Yeah, it was, it's in the contract. It's it's a little bit less than fifty percent more, but it's about.
Okay, sorry. But we can, we have the option of doing that if if there's a place available.
If there's a place available.
Yes, otherwise, we have to go hunting.
Cyber.
Any other questions? Moving right along the personnel. Any questions on the personnel list?
Yeah, on the positions we're putting out for support and for staff and everything, are they new hires or replacements?
Well, uh, you mean the ones that are advertised?
Yeah, there's a, there's a bunch in here. Uh.
The three special education positions are all um replacements. So there are folks who've left the district.
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Which group you talking about, Chris? I'm sorry.
The professional.
Yeah, so yes, the bucktail art is a replacement. The music teacher is a replacement. Uh, the sport teacher, uh, three, that Elizabeth just spoke to our replacements. And the P E family can, yeah, so they're all of replacements.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, there's not a new position at all. Placing someone that retired or left. Any questions on that? Athletic and student activity personnel report. Any questions on that? That's something you'll see every year this time. It lists all the boosty club agendas, officers or hooking staff. It's just paperwork we get every year this time. Usually, the the boosty club will tell what to do to raise money. They have to keep that transparency for Title Nine and things like that. So. Questions on that?
Yeah, I do. Well, you know, uh, me, Bo, there was quite a few board members at the Clay Target League. Um, push, 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 and we got it through. We're so happy. Seems to really work well, but I'm looking at the sheet. And finally, we're paying them a stipend or whatever we call it for their head coach. Great. But I don't under, if you could just explain to me, please, on on the spreadsheet.
Which one? The public advisor?
Send, yeah, Central Mountain High School and in that box. And you, it's alphabetical and you go down to Clay Target League and we have, you know, Jonathan Herman. But then the twenty three, twenty four, I don't know what that means, not enough hours. Um. I have no idea what that means. And then he's only getting, well, I shouldn't say only, well, it's pretty standard. I see a lot of six hundred and seventy, but maybe, maybe next meeting or something, just explain so we understand what that means, not enough hours.
Go ahead, Chris.
Advisors need twenty five hours of outside time. So apart from holding meetings within the school, they have to have twenty five hours outside of classroom time also. Um, the Clay Target League, this individual wasn't, he had an assistant that was more involved than what he was. So he didn't meet the hour criteria.
Okay, all right. But everything's good though, right? Thank you so much.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I have a question on the Clay Targets. So keep writing up.
Yeah, yeah. Have you gone to see it yet?
I don't believe in guns, but.
Okay.
The uh.
We have a kid.
Target thing, the question I had, I just saw this in a paper the other day, they're advertising for the team. But they're also made up the kids from the Sugar Valley Royal Charter School.
Yeah.
We're paying the bill for the coach of Sugar Valley Royals.
That's a good question. I assumed, I assumed.
You never assume.
I assume that Sugar Valley Charter School has a separate contract with them. Because that's, they're a separate club. And so maybe so.
They're not, according to what I read in the paper, they're all just playing together. I feel Central Mountain and Sugar Valley Royal Charter School are participating in the Central Mountain.
I thought part of our contracts were the kids from there or the kids from cyber school and that could belong to the we voted for them to be able to belong to some of the clubs and events going on here.
So we need to look at that.
I agree. I think I believe I want them coming back as much as we can to find the greatest things that are going on here. I'm just thinking if we're paying six hundred and seventy dollars and they have ten percent of kids on it, maybe charge them a hundred dollars or something.
We have a bunch of kids on there that did exceptionally well nationwide.
Sugar Valley does not pay us anything for their students to participate in that.
I just saw that the paper the other day. I thought it's confusing. So, but okay, any other questions?
Do you have, I mean, is that standard for all our clubs? I mean, I know some of the clubs, don't they zoom together or something or?
Very few, if any, clubs. That's the difference. Athletically, we do co-op agreements. And there are different co-op agreements in place, which we pay a fee to have a co-op agreement. But when you're saying a club, that's completely different.
Okay.
And so from a club aspect, we paid the club advisor and we allowed them as was originally proposed to allow students from other schools. So we pay the whole bill.
All right.
No co-op agreement, we normally pay a fee to co-ops. I'm just curious.
Co-op agreement's a hundred dollars, but because it's not a sanctioned P I double A sport, there's no co-op agreement possible.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I can do it. Thank you, Roger.
I knew you would.
Yeah, see everyone next week.
No doubt.
Drive safe. I won't be here next week. Hopefully, I'll be on Zoom. Maybe. Roger will be running the show next week.
Thanks, Butch.
You're welcome, Roger. Okay.